Seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, I call that planning and zoning meeting for the City of Belmont to order. The first item of business is to read the mission and vision statement of the City of Belmont. Vision statement is that Belmont will be a vibrant, multi-generational community that incorporates small-town charm and heritage with an entrepreneurial spirit. And our mission statement is that the City of Belmont provides visionary leadership and high-quality city services to create a community of choice for our residents, visitors, and employees. Some of the core values that our city holds: to lead with honesty, vision, and responsibility, and to practice mutual respect towards fellow council members and city staff. Before we set the agenda, I'd like to make a comment regarding one of the public items. We were notified by the applicant for item number three, Z A two thousand and nineteen point zero three A, that they wish to delay review of their item until a later date. So we will strike that from the agenda. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So move.
Seconded by Nick, seconded by Dan. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. The agenda is set. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of minutes from the last planning and zoning board meeting, January twentieth. Those minutes were provided to you in your packet of information. If there are any questions or comments regarding those minutes, otherwise I will entertain a motion to adopt as presented. So move. Made by Norman.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes from the last planning and zoning meeting are adopted as presented. The first public item, item number one, is comprehensive land use plan update, action items request for continuation until March.
Good evening. At the January meeting, staff presented updates to the Chapter Six action item portion of the comprehensive land use plan. And we've received feedback and input and have started meeting with other staff to make additional revisions in response to that feedback. There's a little delay and I have not, we have not completed that. We want to get it wrapped up to provide in advance to you, well, in advance of the meeting. So at this time, we respectfully ask that you now continue this item until March, where we will provide the materials as discussed.
Is there any motion required for that, or just adoption of?
Yes, we asked that you would go ahead and move and take formal action.
I'll entertain a motion to move the review of the comprehensive land use plan until March.
So move.
Made by Nick, seconded by Jerry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to review that in March. Thanks, Alyssa. The next public item, item number two, Z A two thousand and twenty-two point zero one, Park Street Place. Request to rezone point eight zero acres located at five hundred and five oh two Park Street, parcel number three zero five four six five, from general residential to highway commercial conditional district to accommodate a eleven thousand three hundred seventy-six square foot professional office commercial building. Peyton?
Thank you, Chairman and Planning Board. This is zoning map amendment two thousand and twenty-two point zero one, Park Street Place. This is a request to rezone point eight acres located at five hundred and five oh two Park Street, from general residential to highway commercial conditional district to accommodate an office/commercial building not to exceed eleven thousand three hundred square feet. This project is seeking relief in the areas of sidewalk width, rear yard buffer width, tree save area preservation method, landscape island width, parking quantity, and parking lot setback widths. This parcel is parcel number three zero five four six five, and the applicant is Cal One L L C and Park slash Park Street Partners. Our representatives here tonight are John Church with Park Street Partners L L C and Jennifer Church with Centura Properties, and they are here with us tonight. Also, we're currently working to get him on the line right now, but Dmitri Baches is also a part of that applicant team. He is unable to attend tonight due to COVID. So the property is located here, which is at the corner of Park Street and McLean Avenue, just south of Wilkinson Boulevard. The property to the north is currently a residential property, five oh six Park Street. And the property just to the south is a portion of the Sterling Professional Office Park. The larger parcel kind of to the east is the portion for the Morris Apartments, which is currently underway. The property directly east, the adjacent property is five oh four McLean Avenue. Also, this is a residential structure. So the current environmental setting, there are two residential structures and three accessory structures on site. They, there's a little bit of topography on this site, and there's an existing five-foot-wide sidewalk along Park Street that slightly turns onto McLean Avenue. Another interesting feature of this site is that there is a brick wall at the side of Park Street and McLean Avenue. This is a site triangle issue, so this is a safety concern for those that are trying to turn off of McLean Avenue onto Park Street, specifically trying to see vehicles traveling northbound on Park Street. We've added this as a condition of approval for this project to address it. It was also included in the Morris's conditions of approval to handle that. We just want to make sure that that is addressed since it is a safety concern. And I believe that there's, they're already in the works on improving that right now. And the applicants can speak on this behalf, but I think the Morris team is handling this. So the site analysis, currently, the property is zone general residential. There are some adjacent classifications, which are only two residential properties. The rest is either highway commercial, highway commercial conditional district, or business campus development. This kind of shows that the area is transitioning into more of a commercial business campus environment. So the nearby uses include single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, and office uses. So this is the proposed site plan. So seen here in white, that's the proposed building. It kind of aligns with the adjacent office park that is just south of the property. They're showing to utilize the existing sidewalk along Park Street. Parking access is off of McLean Avenue. As you can see here, there is parking in the rear, which is consistent with our highway, our highway zone in our L D C. So this, I'm just kind of going to go over some regulations in our highway commercial district and what this project is proposing. So height, the applicants are not seeking relief in this area. They are proposing a one-story building. For rear yard buffer, this is an area of relief in which the applicants are seeking. So our current ordinance, any commercial or zone that abuts a general residential use is required to provide a thirty-foot buffer. The applicants here are proposing a ten-foot-wide buffer along the rear property line with the condition of increasing landscaping and providing a fence along that area. So this is an area of relief. As for tree save area, the applicants are required to reserve about thirty-four hundred square feet of tree save area. They are proposing to save about, almost thirteen hundred square feet of tree save area, so relief is not needed. However, the applicants are seeking relief in the area of how they save trees. So based on the tree survey and inventory that the applicant submitted during the sketch plan approval process, a lot of the trees on site are within the proposed building envelope. So it's kind of difficult to save those trees when you're trying to, that's about the only location on site where you could put the building. So they are proposing to provide tree save area utilizing the all replantings, so a hundred percent of the tree save area using replantings. This can be found in the buffer area and along the parking lot perimeter. As for sidewalks, any commercial projects in the city are required to do an eight-foot-wide sidewalk. Just to keep things consistent, the, around the adjacent properties, the applicants are proposing a five-foot-wide sidewalk, which would be consistent of the existing sidewalk on their property and just to carry that around on McLean Avenue. So staff was supportive of that request. As for open space, no commercial open space requirement, so that was not applicable to this project. As for parking, based on office uses, our ordinance requires one per three hundred square feet of office space. One parking spot is required. Therefore, this project would be required to provide thirty-eight parking spaces. The applicants are proposing thirty-four spaces, which is an area of relief, but with such a tight space and where the building is located, just to have that viable building, the applicants had to drop a few parking spaces and are seeking relief. In addition to kind of a tight space, the applicants are seeking relief in the area of the landscape island width. So our ordinance right now requires a nine-foot park, landscape island at the end of parking rows. Our applicants are proposing a six-foot island instead. Staff feels like you could still plant a tree there, provide appropriate lighting, so we were supportive of that request. The last area of relief is the parking lot landscape buffer. So in this specific building form, we require a ten-foot side and rear property, or a ten-foot setback alongside and rear property lines, just to kind of add that buffer area and to screen the parking lot itself. Our applicants are proposing six feet alongside the property, or along the side, both side property lines, so the north and south property lines there, and they're proposing a ten-foot parking lot setback along the rear property line. This is an area of relief that staff was supportive due to the fact that you would still be able to appropriately screen the parking lot there and provide plantings, which would be required. Looks like we're getting Dmitri on the line, which is good. As for building setbacks, this project complies with all of our building setbacks. So this is kind of an up-close view of what the parking lot would look like. So like I mentioned earlier, they are required to provide thirty-eight parking spaces per the ordinance, but are proposing thirty-four spaces. Five of those proposed spaces are compact spaces, so the way our ordinances were in, you can have up to fifteen percent of your total parking as compact spaces, so they are okay in that aspect. Still showing landscape islands here, so this is showing the six-foot-wide landscape islands at the end of those parking rows. Also, if you'll notice on the site, there's a plan for dumpsters here, which will need to be screened in accordance to our L D C. So this is the proposed tree save area, and I would just like to point out that this, these are the trees that the applicants are getting credit for. So they are planning to do additional screening and landscaping, especially along that rear property line. But this is kind of the matrix of what they're proposing to do in their tree save area credits. So based on our ordinance, they're actually providing three hundred seventy percent of the required tree save area. So they're doing, proposing some medium trees along the front and rear property lines, and then some smaller trees along McLean Avenue. As for transportation, I sent this over to our traffic consultant at Kimley Horn. This did not trigger any kind of T I A or T T M. It is below our T I A thresholds. We also sent this plan to N C D O T and wanted to make sure they didn't have any comments. There were none. And also, just wanted to point out again, this site is accessed from McLean Avenue. And also, just another point, something to point out when it comes to transportation. Once the Morris gets finished, people will be able to turn right out of this proposed project and go down to Wilkinson, because that is part of the Morris process. So this will eventually be a thoroughfare, I guess you could consider, from Park all the way to Wilkinson. So this is the proposed architecture. So this is, the top image is the front elevation from Park Street. The bottom image is the side elevation from McLean Avenue. This is in compliance with our L D C, our regulations for this type of building form. This is the rear elevation from the parking lot. So this is what people would see as they were pulling in. So comprehensive land use plan, staff feels like this is in compliance with this plan. This falls under the mixed-use district, so the vision for this category includes medium-to-high residential uses, commercial, office, and civic uses. It is consistent with the vision. It again proposes an office use, which is a primary land use within this district, and supports the auto-centric Wilkinson Boulevard corridor, which promotes a wide range of commercial uses. Staff felt like this was consistent with the goals of the comprehensive land use plan for land use, economy, and community character. The applicants did hold a neighborhood meeting. They held this meeting on January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six P M via Zoom. No members from the public attended the meeting. So in summary, this is a proposal to rezone this parcel from general residential to highway commercial C D to allow relief in the areas of sidewalk width, rear yard buffer width, tree save area preservation method, landscape island width, parking quantity, and parking setback widths. So this does comply with all of our other regulations, but these are just the area in which they're seeking relief. Okay, well, it's not going forward, but I ask that the board receives my report. There we go. So I asked the board to receive this report, any public comment, and then render a recommendation to city council. The options before you deny are to make a motion to recommend, approve as presented, approve with modifications, or disapprove and to find, to complete the findings required, that this map amendment is a reasonable request in the public interest and is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive land use plan. Are there any questions?
Any questions by the board for Peyton?
Okay.
Can you go over what is the current sidewalk width on the adjacent property that's the same form?
Sure. The Park Sterling?
Yeah.
That's a five-foot required. Oops. Let me get back to that.
It looks like in the area, I guess the sidewalk looks like it's about the same, kind of jogs out towards Park Street.
Yeah, so this, oh gosh, forgot I was attached there. That's true. So this parcel is a five-foot sidewalk here. And then also, really, the only place that the applicant would be required to do sidewalk is along McLean Avenue. This would tie into the Morris property, in which they also have a five-foot sidewalk for this property. Yeah, we did look into that.
The one on Park Street is remaining.
For this project, yes.
And within the recommendations of the conditions and indication, that anything on Park Street would be replaced if it's damaged?
Right, because it is an older sidewalk, so we just wanted to make sure if there were any cracks, breaks, anything like that, that it would be fixed.
Nick, are you, any more questions? Norman?
The sidewalk on Park Street, why would we not be able to get the grass median to provide separation between the street and pedestrians and put that sidewalk in alignment with the Park Sterling sidewalk? Because that's a safety issue.
Like from where it kind of?
From this, from their front edge. Why would we, why would we not put the grass median to separate pedestrians from traffic?
And extend this existing?
Yeah, tie it in here and just extend it down and get it off the street to provide safety for the pedestrians on that walk?
Yeah, this is what you're saying about requiring streetscape.
So, and Shelley, correct me if I'm wrong, I think if this were no sidewalk, just blank parcel, blank canvas, and they were proposing this, we do have regulations on planting strips, what the sidewalk width would be, and things like that, but since this is existing, it wouldn't necessarily apply.
You still have the ability, so the applicant's requesting to maintain existing sidewalks, which is fine. You do have the ability to require a new sidewalk to align with the Sterling and widen that grass strip area if you so choose.
I just bring that up as a safety issue to me, and I would not want to approve a plan that doesn't take that into consideration.
Let's consider that after the applicant's strokes and public comment and when we go into discussion. Good point.
I was just going to wait for the great rest and we'll go deeper.
Yeah. Any other questions for Peyton?
I don't have a question before I ask a question, if you have any comments, any explorers. My friend was representing churches a couple of years ago in the Congress. So this play, the word of that, that's a conference. We haven't had any.
You're not involved in this project. And really, the new one sixty D statute talks more about conflicts with the city council than with the rest.
Can he refuse himself from voting, though, if he so chooses?
If he chooses, he could. And I think under your rules, I think the planning board has some rules, but normally you're required to vote unless you have a proprietary or fiduciary interest in that or for the government board, a family relationship, business relationship, or such.
Okay.
That applies to city council, not to you.
Very good.
I don't feel like I have a conflict, but I'll leave that to you.
Any comment from the planning board for Jerry's involvement in this? Okay. So no comment, no question for Peyton?
No.
Okay. All right, no questions from the planning board. I'll move to the applicant's presentation.
Dmitri, are you on?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we can hear you. Dmitri, do you have anything to add?
I was going to go ahead and start having a conversation.
Not for the applicant.
Don't walk away with it.
If you could say your name and your address, please.
My name is John Church. I live at one oh oh four Middleton Court in Cranworth, North Carolina. My wife, Jennifer Church, is here with me tonight. We've been in this community for the last twenty-five years and have been developing real estate in Gaston County over that twenty-five years period. The most recent project we've been working on for the last ten years was Chronicle Mill, and I'm proud to say that we're almost ready to start occupying that facility. So this is our next development project. As you know, it's a commercial office building. We've done a lot of research on the demand for office space. There basically isn't any new office space in this community. We have one listing ourselves across from the Chronicle of office space that's available in downtown Belmont. But from a supply and demand standpoint, we feel like this is a project that would be successful. And we've been in this business for, like I said, twenty-five years developing real estate. So we're excited about the opportunity to bring new space to the area. It's in demand. We, you know, you look at the neighborhood, as you know, it's basically transitioning to commercial. It's only a few houses left in the area that remain to be developed, and it's consistent with our neighbors to the south. And so we thought this would be a nice extension of office space in that area, which is basically medical office space. And with the new Caramont. And with the new Caramont facility that's going up just a couple miles down the road, we thought that it'd be a nice complement to, again, adding that space to the, to the market. The, the commercial corridor is, you know, very active. There's a lot of traffic there, so I think it, again, it's a great space to put commercial real estate. And also converting it from residential to commercial, you know, the, right now, there's the, the tax assessment on the property is probably less than $3,000. We estimate the value of this project to be between probably $2 to $3 million with the assessed, the value on that property would add to the tax rolls roughly $25,000 to $30,000 a year in, in taxes potentially. So the conversion from residential to commercial would be creative to the, to the community from a, a tax standpoint. So, you know, you know, we feel, you know, really good about the project. We're working with Dimitri Batzis, he's our partner in our, our partnership, and he has extensive experience in developing real estate, not just here nationally, but internationally. And he can talk to the specifics of the, of the real estate. But I know one of the things that was brought up here was the sidewalks. Jennifer and I walked from Catawba, out on Wilkinson Boulevard, all the way around the, the CVS, Walgreens, all the way up to the property, and all the sidewalks are five feet, and they all line up. The one, I think, question about, it does change directions right there at the corner of our property, so, but it does line up with the rest of the sidewalks, all the way down to Wilkinson. And I don't know if you have any questions that you might ask of me, but I'm willing to answer those now if you, if you want.
Any questions for the applicant?
And Dimitri, he's online right now. He can talk to the specifics of the, the development and the project itself, and the design for parking and so forth. Any questions?
I just, I'd ask to go off the forum's question. Sidewalk, would be moving it to be aligned with existing sidewalk, rebuilding sidewalk, that impact the project?
Well, I haven't estimated the cost, but obviously to tear it all out and to rebuild a sidewalk, you know, is, there's a cost associated with it. I'm not sure what that would be. But there's, there's, I think, one of the things that they also mentioned is that the, when you're on McLean, looking south on Park Street, the brick wall creates a barrier that I talked to my, our partner from Morris Apartments just last week, and we have an agreement with them to tear down that wall and grade that down, and, and basically it'll just be a berm, the whole walls, we plan to take out the whole wall, so you just see a berm right there that's graded kind of like our next door neighbor to the south, to the north. So that'll be eliminated, and so hopefully here within the next 30 days.
John, I think I know the answer, but I'd ask the question. When you can only provide 34 parking spaces, why would you not consider a reduction in the building size rather than having to ask us to allow for less parking and create more congestion and make it difficult, more difficult for folks to find a parking space to come to your, so?
Well, the, the viability of the project.
Answer that question if.
Yeah, go ahead, Dimitri, yeah.
My name is Dimitri Batzis, 28th Street, Savannah, Georgia. To answer this earlier question of the parking, at the moment, parking, well, it's being reevaluated. A lot of office space users and tenants that we're looking for are actually decreasing their parking due to the ability now to have workers and patrons visit in more scheduled and more scheduled ways in terms of how they come in and have the remote work opportunity that some people will have employees, reduces the amount of local parking required, and that's actually nationally occurring at the moment. We tend to look into this space, three per hundred, three percent of being asked for is probably a little bit over, especially now that we've gotten through the COVID, and then the, the drive-in demands. So we figured with the four space request, just very minimal, and the tenants that would be putting into this space, it was more productive to create taxable space, revenue generating space, to create space or asphalt space that didn't do any of, and really wouldn't impact congestion or the ability of people or patrons to park within the line.
Can you talk a little bit about the size of the units that you're gonna be able to provide inside that might help resolve some of this question about parking? I mean, if, if you were to add, say, four spaces, right, just on the current layout, you would be reducing the size of the building by nine feet on the short side, so you're down to like 63 feet in depth. Can you talk a little bit about the size of the spaces that you're looking at for, for the tenants? That might help us understand what you're looking for and then how that might help with the, the parking requirement. Does that make sense to the board?
It does.
Yes.
Especially now with the technology need for the way things are wired and more space, the floor plate is critical. We're actually mitigating the floor plate just in the south of Medical Complex, which is a pretty standard floor plate, where 22 feet in depth, which is important for outfitting space for marketable, viable tendencies. And it may allow us to occupy four tenants if we want to, probably without the one user or two, or two users that would bring a hatch or, or two tenants that would be equally distributed across the, the building and your space. So from a site point of view, that we, we were, we backed into the floor plate based on the microdynamics for this type of longer space in particular. Every foot or so that you shave off from the space makes it less desirable in terms of how people can outfit it, and, you know, especially now post-COVID, especially the office sector. The way space is viewed and carved up internally to a floor plate is very different than it was two years ago. The ability to have separation, especially for medical, there is becoming much more important. So that gave us the parameters by which we placed the building, and then we backed into that, we discovered about the parking and realized that due to the changes in the market, which are probably going to be more long-term than, than people realize, the need to park that many spaces would be, would not benefit, would not be seen as a, a, a need by the tenant that we'd be looking for. You know, the, one of those challenges I think came about this, was that people would come in and use a certain amount of office space, it would not ruin our, our, our building if they felt that they needed more than that space that we have available. But we're certainly certain of different market demand, like the discussions we've already had with people who don't know the parking count in the area, but we have, are proposing, we've got no problem with it.
Thanks. Any other questions for the applicant before I move on to public comment?
I do have one more. Could you talk a little bit about storm drainage and how you're going to handle the runoff from this facility? Are you planning on tying into the storm sewer in Park Street and, and mitigate the amount of runoff that's gonna come from the increased amount of impervious surface that you're gonna be adding to the site? Or are you just gonna let it sheet flow out of the driveway and onto McLean Street and so, and so on?
Right now, we're having the, we're going to be doing a stormwater potential plan, a stormwater plan, and we begin the project, and we'll have it obviously have to be approved by the city engineer, but we've already done a preliminary, which shows that our water flow now, after the development of, currently in water flow after development, will be minimal for the following reasons. We would be grading the site towards the rear, towards McLean. McLean drops, and there actually is McLean extended to the apartment complex. For Morrison, they're building a detention pod just off the map that you see on the screen there. So we would be tying into the, the McLean Street, then we should be heading into the pond that they built along the, whatever would make it, along that way would make it to the pond. So we would be retaining most of it due to the fact that our plan in the buffer to the side would actually prevent most of the runoff from coming in, because it would keep them in that 10-foot buffer, which would be, which would be planted quite extensively. So we would actually be reducing the stormwater runoff even at the built-out space that you see here. By the way, we've shaped the parking lot and have that rear, rear buffer along the property line with the residential building behind us. Currently, the, the property, although it doesn't look like it would, because of the type of grass it's on and the cones and the parking lot where it's located, there is runoff there now, we would be mitigating that through this management.
Simply put, I see a doubling of the impervious surface between what's there now, what's more than double than what they're proposing, so the runoff is gonna increase. And McLean Street, and, and McLean Avenue drains to Park Street from the driveway entrance proposed.
Can you speak up so you can hear?
Yeah.
There's some.
Dimitri, I, I will say that in my, in my review of the plan, it looks like the impervious surface is gonna roughly double, a little bit more than double, between what's there now and what you're proposing. And the, and McLean Avenue drains basically back to Park Street from the proposed entrance that you have. So I, I don't know about how much water you're gonna be able to get back to the rear, and I also don't agree that the buffer is going to act as a detention unless you design it as such, so.
That's correct. When you see the entrance, it is at the top of the knoll. We're not draining to that entrance, we're draining to the bottom, which would be the northeast corner of the parking lot. That's where it would be draining into that buffer that we were tearing from the site. The secret floor of water would be going directly back to that buffer, along a curve of the parking lot into the drain and, and into the buffer. And then whatever was left would be coming out at that point at the bottom, which is below the driveway that you see in that picture. And that drains down McLean to the east, not towards Park. The rest of the site where the building sits would also drain back into the parking lot. It is on the knoll that's higher, it would be drained in position to drain back to the parking lot, and the parking lot, as you said, drains to the northeast corner, not the, not the entry drive as you see there.
And I would just like to add too, that we have a petition of approval on condition three, part of the city engineer, the stormwater runoff analysis shall be completed during the construction plan review process. Analysis shall be provided by the engineer trying to complete a pre-development runoff analysis and first construction analysis. Analysis shall include a tenure and on under your runoff. So that is the petition.
So two things, go ahead.
So I'm just gonna sound on a preliminary basis, too. There's a letter here from an engineer that says that they've looked at this, so.
Is there any requirement for impervious paving on sites like this? I see some impervious on some of the site plans we're seeing.
Could you repeat that question?
Is there any pervious, this would be a question for staff, any pervious requirements for a site development like this?
It's based on the number of parking lots that make the number of look at, actually, the number of pervious parking.
Okay. I, I guess that, you know, your comment about Peyton, the, the post-construction review, I guess my question would be, what happens in that review if it's, does not agree with the report as currently presented? What would the mitigation efforts be at that time?
So Jerry asks the engineer, he's charged with reviewing the study after the requirements and project construction plan we have to evolve to mitigate any mitigation required to address the runoff. So this may be planned, maybe Jerry may say that maybe we need to do underground storage or something, so it will get evaluated and it will be required, required with his decision on the study.
Or pervious paving, or something to?
Or whatever.
Something, okay.
Has no evaluate option.
Great.
Based on the study.
Norman, is that? I was trying to resolve your question, but does, or?
They're gonna look at it, so that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that this development wasn't gonna be overloading water on the neighbors or other streets.
Okay. Yeah. Any other questions for staff? I'm sorry, for the applicant. At this time, we'll move to have public comment. We have one gentleman for public comment, Randall Bigum. Bigum, excuse me. If you could come to the mic, please. Please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes to present.
I am Randall Bigum, representing my mother-in-law, Gladys Martin-Freddie, who's owner of that house directly behind your project. I just wanted, I heard something about the runoff, wastewater runoff, and so I see you address that, but my question is, why don't you do that before the project is approved? So we know exactly what it is. I'd like to see pipes or whatever else you got going there, but that's food for thought. And I kind of got off track there. Mildred was allowed to be here tonight, but her thoughts are that this project is going to remove value for her lot as a residential piece. No one has ever approached her to sell it for a commercial of any kind, so she still lives there, she comes back, but she's unable to take care of herself 24 hours a day, so we, we gather in that house a lot, so we're using it. But we're saying that it will create a substantial reduction in the volume of her property. So she would like for this rezoning not to happen and leave the zoning the way it is. She's asked for a copy of the wastewater review. I have the copy from your, from your engineer, but it's not in detail, and we'd like to know where that water's going for sure. We want to postpone approval in March if necessary for us to obtain an attorney to vote against the project. So those, those are her feelings about it. She's keeping it and she wants it to be residential. Couple of questions. There's a mention of a fence along the property line, the maintenance property line. At present, there's the brick wall, and it's mentioned in here there's gonna be some kind of fence along the rear of the property.
Wrap it up, please.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. And, uh, she didn't mention that she is interested, but we were not aware of the January 4th meeting, and, um, we just figured out about it when the sign was posted in the yard, and we didn't listen until Tuesday of this week.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
That's all.
At this time, reviewing the public comment and applicant's presentation as well as staff, we'll open it up for a question and a discussion among the board.
Do we want to take these, count one?
That would be fine. We've done that before where we take each of the relief areas one at a time. In the report, in your agenda, page 17 starts with sidewalk width. Any comments on the, um, relief for a five-foot sidewalk along McLean Avenue?
I'd say, uh, I'll put Norman on this one. I'll probably five-foot sidewalk, but I would like to see a line for the rest of the sidewalk.
I have a question about that real quick, and I'm not an engineer, but if it lined up here when it curves right there, it's going to push it into this corner. I don't know what that would look like.
So I think it would just have a ramp at the corner there, and I don't know how it's determined into the adjacent property. It's something to work out during the strapping documents. But I was probably a few questions to staff. What is the current cross-section for, like, as far as like the Morris site is concerned?
So it should be a standard, um, five-foot sidewalk with a six-foot planting strip and then the street.
Okay, and this would just be sidewalk back and forth?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So is this not required to have a five-foot and six-foot planting strip on the side? And just what targeted on the rest of the street for the Morris property for that interior for this?
I think just to keep it aligned with where the existing was, um, that's kind of why the sidewalk is shown right there, and then utilizing that grassy area between the sidewalk and the building for a street tree is supposed to get into the top of that.
And I'm sorry, I don't have the Morris, I don't have the Morris plants in front of me, but I believe the right-of-way through the Morris is actually made on that section because it was all greenfield. And so there's actually going to be a gap between this project and where the Morris starts its sidewalks because we have Ms. Gladys, is that correct? Her house? Uh, in between, uh, in between. So there will be a gap in sidewalk between the Morris and this project, and I believe that's just the applicant was trying to preserve the existing sidewalk on the front edge and just turn it and keep a line to, um, to fit within the existing right-of-way at that intersection. So, um, McLean at that section is only a 40-foot right-of-way if I'm not mistaken, so it's, it's more narrow than further down where the Morris is developing.
There wouldn't be any, like, renovation requirements or anything?
No, so actually, this intersection's interesting because, um, there's a planned future project unfunded by NCDOT at Park and Wilkinson that will ultimately block off the full movement at this intersection. So that's one reason we ran it by, so you won't be able to take a left out in the future. Right now, you can, but you're taking a chance shooting across four lanes of traffic onto Park, but we know in the future there will be a barrier where this will not be a full movement in the future. So I think that's why when we wrapped it, NCDOT, they said they had no requirements, no turn lanes and so forth.
Do you have the payment numbers on the button?
I do not know unless it's in the plans. I'm sorry, don't know that.
Less than 20 feet if you compare it to the, if you compare it to the parking space that's sitting not too far away. It's less than 20 feet.
So she, so we're looking at it now. McLean will no longer be able to turn left on the park. It's going to be a right out only?
Long-term.
Long-term.
Or ever.
Yeah, that's if we ever get funding to do that project there. But it is dangerous now. We've watched people try to take a left out of that and shoot across.
Well, I, I see other developments that have had to do the sidewalk per plan, even when there wasn't existing sidewalk. Case in point, CBS, when they built down there, there was an old five-foot walk. They had to come back in with their plan and build a wide, eight-foot wide sidewalk with grass separating the pedestrians from the traffic. I, I don't understand why we wouldn't make this development be harmonious with the adjoining properties or the development of the apartments down behind it just because Ms. Gladys's property is separating it. I don't know why we wouldn't want continuity and also have the planting strip there in my eyes to more separate pedestrian from traffic than for street trees or what have you. And, and, and I feel very strongly about the sidewalk on Park Street and having that grass median in between the traffic on Park Street and the pedestrian on the sidewalk, so.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Norman. Shelley, is there any connectivity between the apartment complex and the rest of Park Street? Is this, is this the only way? If I were walking to downtown, this is the only way I can get there? There was a Bax did and wrote it, I think.
Currently, yes, but, but eventually there, they did stub out some streets that could connect up to Plain Tree where they could come out on a signal in the future, but that's not part of the Morris plan. So there will be other opportunities for circulation, but currently...
So we didn't request that Morris go all the way to Park with their...
Improvements?
Improvements.
No, they only did the improvements along their street front edge. That's correct. And there weren't any, uh, we, the TIA did not identify any improvements at that intersection other than the site distance issue.
That's traffic. I'm worried about pedestrians.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not hearing comment necessarily on the five-foot size, but I'm hearing more about the safety and where the sidewalk's located against the curb. Is that correct?
That's my opinion.
And that's on both Park and McLean?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm just going to add that it matches the sidewalk across the street and down here, and, I mean, it seems to me that it's, I mean, if you look across the street, it's the same as all these sidewalks and across from here. So it does line up with them, and it would line around the curve. So one difference to me with CBS, like you said, and this building, one is CBS, I mean, that's a large intersection, but they're also very large commercial developers, and I like to, I mean, I think it's important to, to make sure that projects are feasible. I mean, I would hate to make this unfeasible over a sidewalk and not have this development because I really think it adds to the value here. And that we should support local developers too, so I don't know. It's just, to me, it matches all across here, all of here. I mean, if they're going to be in danger here, they're going to be in danger here and here and down here too.
But they're not in for a plan review, they're in a plan rezoning.
Those other properties are...
This is the only opportunity to fix it.
But prior to any development too, where the new work properties, so, I mean, the new work development is large, I'm sure. So, I mean, eventually these properties will develop too, and we expect them policies to be there.
I would agree with that.
The one thing, the other concessions that passed before, there's some give and take to say if they're, so these other, um, setback changes like that, it's a little more give and take, but like I said, it matches, you know, which ones as well.
So hearing comments from everybody, let's, uh, I'd recommend us just keep moving through and not make any votes or motions on this one particular one, but let's move on to number two.
Yes.
Sort of pursuant to what Jerry just said. Number two, rear yard buffer width. It's seeking relief to go to 10-foot thoroughly landscaped buffer in the rear instead of the required 30-foot buffer. Uh, this is adjacent to Ms. Gladys's property. Uh, there is an abundant buffer indicated in a wall along the rear property that enhanced this area. Any comments on this item?
Was that an opinion or was that a statement?
That was read.
That's what you read out?
Number two.
Okay. That the 10 feet's abundant?
It is indicated in here that it is abundant.
Okay.
As presented.
All right.
Do you have a description of the wall? See if I can buffer it, the wall?
I think it's just a fence.
It indicates item number 10 on page 19. The fence must comply with LDC Chapter 4, 7, 2B4, um, and increased landscaping, although I don't see anything in the report that indicates what those items are.
We have done that before.
To this extent?
Probably not to this extent.
This is, this is not cutting 10, this is not cutting five feet off of 30. This is taking it down to 10.
I know, I know.
Can we, did you want to be to, to address your, your question about the fence?
I can't hear anything. Were there questions?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Uh, the question is related to, uh, more information related to the proposed fence and abundant landscape being drawn on the rear property line with a 10-foot buffer. What type of fence?
Yes.
Yes.
We would, when we get into the details of the design, we would be building, wow, a city-approved fence along, along the rear, and our plan will require tree replacement planning would be built into that buffer. And we would additionally add more shrubs and other trees possibly along that perimeter line in the back. We would heavily buffer that area from the adjoining residential property for a set reason, and also, uh, as we said earlier, it serves as a wonderful sponge for the minimal amount of runoff that our engineer projected would be created by the, uh, the project itself, so it would be approved as to be approved.
Any comments?
Dmitri, did you have an anticipated height associated with the wall or fence, excuse me?
The fence would be at a minimum of five to six feet, I think. The, the, the positive about where it's currently located, the wall, for many minutes there, the wall currently runs along the property line, along property, uh, and dissipates at heads to the south. And we would be, we care it's going a little bit, moving it away from the, the sort of knoll that the building was set on into the parking in the back. We would be raising the property slightly, um, a little bit higher by a couple of feet along that, and on top of that, we would be, uh, building fence. So by the time it's all said and done, the, you know, you would not be able to see the property from our parking lot looking back to the, to the east, you wouldn't be able to see the property, uh, next door and vice versa. Um, the, the residential lot to the south, to the east of the, back would actually be looking up. Where currently they see a house and a garage, they would actually see, uh, a slight array of, of grass and, and knoll, and then they see, uh, plantings. Um, and then if they were getting closer that to you applying, they'd see a fence at the parking lot rear.
Any comments based on what we've heard?
What's the height for the size of the wall that's there now? Let's see if photos, anyone know?
It's, I'm guessing maybe, uh, at McLean, as you look south, it, it tapers. So at the McLean side, it's probably four feet, maybe, and then it tapers, tapers away until you get to about, you look at this, where this dot is on this, right here, that's a feet, my guess, probably where it tapers off, and then the rest of the yard is just graded, you know, you know, as it is right now. It's, you know, walls from that. So that, that's a probably a, maybe a 60-foot wall.
I think Jerry might have been referring to the wall on the, uh, the property line along Ms. Gladys's property line.
Yeah, the back.
In the back.
The back wall.
The back line.
The back wall at McLean is four feet roughly.
Talking about back here? Oh, there's a wall there.
So there's a wall.
We're talking about between Ms. Gladys's house and your back property line.
There's a wall.
And it's four feet high?
Yes.
And it's, it's only, look at your survey.
It shows, I have showed everybody.
It shows that it goes about...
75 feet.
It goes 75 feet, yeah.
Mm-hmm. It's 40 percent.
Here's the actual wall.
Okay.
That helps you. So this is Ms. Gladys's property here?
Yeah.
We should show that to Jerry, please.
Thank you.
This is Ms. Gladys's house.
There's also some, Google Earth provides that.
Cool.
It's Gladys's house here.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry. We need to patch it in.
Any comments on the relief here for rear yard buffer width? Dan?
No. I'm not going to support it, sorry.
Okay. Any other comments? Item number three, tree save, preserve, preservation area, seeking relief in requiring one-half of the TSA be met using existing trees and proposing to utilize all new plantings to fulfill the .08 acres of required TSA. Any comments for this relief? Very none. We'll move on. Landscape island width. Developers seeking relief in the requirement of a minimum nine-foot-wide landscape island at the end of all parking rows and proposing a six-foot-wide island instead.
I'd be okay with it provided it had amended soil underneath it at the judgment of the city.
And that's to ensure...
For the health of the tree.
Yeah, plantings.
Are the, are the trees, I didn't, are the trees in the islands? I didn't see any, no.
Are there not supposed to be?
There would be requirements for that, just not shown, I don't believe.
The, the plan there is that the, uh, the tree save...
There's the slope. It's going down. Two feet, four feet, six feet, eight feet.
Right.
That's the applicant would be doing on site, but it is a requirement for LDC to have landscaping, so it'll get that.
Yeah, shade trees for the...
A question for the applicant. Where are you in the process of a, of a civil site plan or a landscape plan? Is this as far as you've gone with the drawings? Sounds like there's some, just some questions about planting types and locations. I'm not sure if we have all the information just yet.
We don't have a landscape plan for the site. Is that, is that the question?
Yes. You don't have one at this time?
No, we don't have the complete landscaping at Eleanor. We have a civil, um, plan for the site, 70 feet of approval.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, if it's per ordinance, I'm fine with it. I just think that island itself needs more for the tree plantings in there, otherwise you're going to have basically mostly impervious area around it. It's not going to get a whole lot of water to it.
With amended soil and, uh, tree types for that size island, you, obviously you don't want to plant something too big...
Yeah.
...in a six-foot island.
The ordinance, I think, covers that pretty well.
Any other comments on item four? When we move to item five, parking quantity. They are seeking relief for the required 38 spaces by proposing 34 spaces.
The only thing that I would say is that I appreciate Dmitri's discussion about the square footage and about how the future may be changing the way that we, uh, occupy office space, but we're being asked to approve a plan that doesn't... we're asked to do that, and this approval will go long into the future, when pandemics and things like that may change. In fact, you know, I don't know about you guys, but we're going back to the office already. Everybody that I know is going back to the office, going into Charlotte and stuff. So I can't support the parking.
Any other comments on item five?
Yeah, I would just add proximity to highway, commercial, major thoroughfare, transit, future transit. I think four spaces, I'd be willing to let that go.
I can agree with the market if people come in there, whether they look at what they need for their office. They don't feel like they're part of the community. Regardless of, kind of feel like they're part of the community. The people that are coming in, they're not going to lease a space for their buying space at short. So that's despite the market.
I don't, I don't agree with that.
It's not about.
So if the market doesn't agree with it, then why build it?
It's not about whether the market agrees with it.
Yeah.
You're granting approval for a building to be larger than what the infrastructure can support. So it's not about will the market drive or that kind of thing. At the end of the day, they're landlords. They're going to rent to whoever comes their way.
I'm just, I'm probably going to leave an office, and it's, I mean, the one that ensures enough space for the customers or employees, or they're not going to rent. So that's where it's, when I say the market, meaning the people that would be going into this space, they would be leasing it. No one is going to fit their space.
You would hope.
Yeah.
But it all starts with the approval.
Shelley, sorry, I got to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
What can go in here? What kind of use?
Well, under the HC, it's proposed as professional office type use.
Is there anything else, any other uses?
It would be up to, you know, my understanding is that it was proposed for a professional office similar to the adjacent building. Doesn't mean like a service-related type business may not go in there. And what I mean is, I don't know, I don't want to say a nail shop, but certain service-type, yeah, related. And so.
Yeah, I mean, it would be driven obviously by the market in terms of, you know, what people would be going to. To your point, who would be interested in that site given the parking? And, you know, I don't know, it's three per thousand.
Typical for a professional office.
It's one for 300.
Yeah. And one thing I would say, so for example, if the concern is, will a restaurant go in there, which has a lot higher, well, they would have to come in and do an interior outfit, in which we would assess the parking. And we'd have to tell them there's not adequate parking there. So we do look when there's interior outfits, what's within a site.
It's going to make hard.
Any other comments on parking quantity?
I do have, Shelley actually prompted a question. So I guess, are we approving a straight-up 38 parking, or are we approving a ratio so that if a different use did come in, how would that be evaluated?
Which was sort of what I was asking.
Yeah.
So if this project is approved with 34 spaces, then we would assess any use that comes in. You're not approving that ratio. You are for the shell building.
Okay.
Right? So again, if a restaurant walked in, so say half of it's filled with an office, that they're taking up the demand for parking. If a restaurant tries to come in, there's inadequate when they do their outfit, we would evaluate it and have to contact the landlord.
So a restaurant could come in?
I'm sorry?
So a restaurant could come in?
Well, then HC, the HC zone does allow for various types of commercial uses. Yes, you are correct.
I'm in this condition right now in my office. We have a restaurant in our.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about, same like call center.
So now you can't talk to, I hear your concern. So this is a conditional zoning. You have the ability to talk to the applicant about restricting uses as well. So they're proposing it all as office type at that ratio, and you feel comfortable, you can ask them to restrict uses to eliminate the possibility of restaurants or the higher users.
Here's my point. They could take 1,200 square feet off the building and go with the plan and not have to ask for relief on parking. But they want the square footage so they can have more to occupy, which means more parking required. So if you don't care about, or you have this issue where a lot of people aren't going to be coming in because of COVID and all these other different changes that we've seen in our workplace, then why can't you reduce the building by 1,200 square feet and not have to ask for a parking allowance? I don't understand. It's one space per 300, not three per 1,000.
Yeah.
That's where the difference is.
You're looking at one per 333, not one per 300.
It's one per 300.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so they're looking for one per 333, basically.
So that's how I came up with the 1,200. I did see.
My perspective to answer your question, I'm not a commercial leasing agent, but they definitely at least per square foot. I don't think every square foot in a building is used by people. I mean, there's going to be, and just because they're landlords, I don't think there's going to let just anybody in. I don't think landlords operate like that.
That's different. Okay.
So, I mean, the one thing that is important, if we want progress around here, is project feasibility. I mean, it has to work, or they won't be able to do it, which has to be taken into consideration as well.
That's exactly why I'm bringing up the parking being an issue. It's deficient.
I agree that.
I'm sorry, was there a question for me?
No, there's no, no, we're past that.
There's, they're having a dialogue.
And what would be even more important is if they go to talk to Ms. Gladys and buy her property and expand the parking lot, they could do anything they wanted to.
Is she willing to sell it, though? I'm sure anybody would.
We're not considering that personally as part of this proposal. I mean, I don't know how to answer the question.
No, it wasn't a question. I just.
There's no question.
Yeah, it's just.
What was the comment then?
That's a comment between.
Would you consider purchasing that to add parking?
That I could consider it, but would they consider it?
That's, and that's where Al was going. It doesn't seem like he's willing to sell it. And I'm sure if he is willing to sell it, there will be.
But Ms. Gladys has come to the meeting tonight and says she didn't even, she was never approached. She, she.
Hold on, Demetri.
We've got a bunch of comments going on. Let's go to Norman, and then we'll go to Dan, and then we'll go to Demetri.
All I'm saying is, is that Ms. Gladys has come to the meeting tonight and acknowledged that she didn't have any idea of the community meeting, and no one has approached her to even let her know what the project is being proposed.
She, we can't get ahold of her. She didn't have a phone number. She, there's nobody that we can directly contact. This is the first one I've met. He's not my neighbor, but he's part of the family. We were told that she lives in a nursing home. And I'd love to talk to him about it, but haven't been able to. I've talked to people in the community that knows Stanley, and they can't get ahold of him.
Okay.
I would love to buy the property. But nobody's, I don't know what to say.
That's not really the issue at hand.
I would just like to add in your packet, the mail notices, the labels were in there
for the both of the community meeting and the, this meeting tonight. And based on G.I.S., Gladys, she was mailed.
Okay.
Those two notices. I just wanted to put that in the record. Based on G.I.S., the mailing address on there is 504 North Park Street. Except that is a brand name company that would, they would be addressed to G.I. But she was.
The sign's been up per ordinance. It's a eight by six.
Oh, it's huge. I understand.
Yeah, the sign's been there for a long time.
John, I'm not relinquishing them of their responsibilities to be observant. Understood.
Is there, is there some more, some more discussion? It's going to go to the next part.
We're going to go to Dan now.
I'm just, I'm ready to go to the next piece.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, let's move on.
Parking lot setback widths, seeking relief in the required 10-foot parking lot setbacks, and instead proposing six-foot setbacks to accommodate the parking spaces presented. Any comments?
I'll just do your recording. It's, we're, I do this a lot. We would never go this far in trying to create and ask for these many, this many concessions. It just doesn't work. The building just doesn't work on this site. You're asking for too much, too much variance in the code. So, and I think that has to do with, we're trying, they're trying to get as much parking as possible in here. They've reduced the island width, they've reduced the setbacks, they've reduced everything that they could possibly reduce, and not really give anything back. So as far as the side yards, I can't support it.
So we could either, we could do this a couple of ways. We could go back and go through all, talked about all of them, and discuss and make motions and talk about what we're willing to accept, not accept. Or we could take all six into consideration, have a vote on all six, as discussed.
Okay. If we do all six all at once, and it's a straight-up, like, no from everybody, is there an opportunity to revisit it one at a time and add conditions to it, or?
That'd be a question for Shelley. I would not think so. Maybe even Jim.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm saying if we want to do this quickly and just do a straight-up yes or no, and we vote no, do we have an opportunity to come back and say, well, what if we did this as a condition, as a modification of the conditions, and then vote again?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest you go through the areas of relief, because if you're okay with some and you're not on others, that gives everybody the opportunity to consider.
Okay.
Options or modifications, and based on that.
Okay.
There isn't a tie.
And do you agree, but I guess I'm looking at the attorney. Do you agree on that?
I like that. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep. So we're going to move forward with going back through each six, and we will discuss whether or not as presented is acceptable, or if there are amendments that are required, and then we'll vote on those amendments or as presented. So with item number one, based on the discussion, I did not hear any issues with the five-foot wide sidewalk, but rather the location adjacent to the curb, and that the alignment would rather be with a buffer rather than on the curb. Is that correct, on both Park and McLean?
Yes.
All right. So we'll vote on that issue. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say, actually, let's do hands.
Wait, can I ask one question?
Sure. I'm not clear on what you just said either.
Yeah, okay. So we agreed with the way it's presented, and then we're going to vote no on this, right? Like, if we want to vote in favor of the way it was presented.
Well, the group needs to decide, the board needs to decide how we want to, what's the issue at hand to vote. And I heard through a number of comments that it was more about the alignment than it was about the width. So if you don't agree that it should be realigned to provide buffer, then you should vote no.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that you can't vote yes or no on other issues, and it also doesn't mean you can vote yes or no on the whole issue at hand. But for the moment, it sounded like the board would like to realign, based on the comments we heard. So that's, as Chair, I'd like to make that.
So real quick, though, do we need to get sign off from the applicant that they'd be agreeable to that?
We can ask the applicant.
What issue?
To realign the sidewalk on Park Street to provide landscape buffer between the sidewalk and the street, and then to relocate the sidewalk along McLean to provide planting strip.
Are you saying the wall on the plane, too?
Yes. Is that what?
It's just on the park. I mean, right now, I guess what you're asking is that the sidewalk aligns with the property to the north, so it won't be aligned if I change it. So I will be aligned with the south property, but I won't be aligned with the north property.
Or the property across this.
Yeah, every place else in this neighborhood has got the same kind of sidewalk, except for this one section right here. So if I align it, the property to the south, I won't align to the property in the north.
I don't, I don't think we had discussions about alignment. I think the discussion was about the safety of the pedestrians along the street of your property. And we're not considering adjacent property at this point. It's about the location of the sidewalk and the relationship to the curb and the street.
So, okay, but then talk about the plane now. What do you want us to do on the plane?
I heard that the idea was to relocate the sidewalk to allow for a planting strip between the road and the sidewalk.
It won't move. Because then that's, you're going to have, so it won't move. If that's the sidewalk, you're going to have to.
We need to stop.
Do we need DOT's approval to mess with that corner?
I'm not sure. Dan, you have a comment?
Can I make a suggestion? So really, when it comes down to whether they agree with the condition or not, that's really at council level. Does it need to appear at this point? That's, we appreciate that. So if you want to discuss your exercise through these, whether you support it or there are alternatives, then we can.
You can suggest.
Yes.
We're going to make that a recommendation in our report to the council.
Let council make the decision.
All right.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve with the amendment that the sidewalks would be realigned to provide adequate landscape buffer between the pedestrian and the sidewalk and the road, both on Park Street and McLean Avenue. Okay? Is everybody?
So that we approve the whole entire thing, just the only thing you would change is the sidewalk?
We're going through each condition of relief, and then, and then we'll decide after that. So, the motion, I'll take a second. Motion is made by Norman.
All right, I'll second.
Seconded by Nick. All in favor, say aye, or raise your hand, please. That's five. All opposed, one. Motion carries for this condition only, not for the project. All right, item number two, rear yard buffer width. We had discussions, applicant is seeking relief for the 10-foot rather than 30-foot buffer. There was discussion regarding the fence in the backyard as well as the landscaping buffer. I'll entertain, it did not sound like through discussion there was any modifications to this, unless I heard differently. I'll entertain a motion to vote, to approve this condition as presented.
So move.
Second.
Made by Nick, seconded by Dan. All in favor, raise your hand.
One, two, three.
Four. All opposed, raise your hand.
I don't know if you were voting or not.
At vote two. Tree save area preservation.
Motion to approve is presented.
Made by Nick, seconded by Jerry. All in favor, raise your hand. Four. All opposed, two. Item number four, landscape island width from nine foot to six foot. The amendment made by Nick was with amended soil and adequate tree type for the smaller six-foot wide island. Any other amendments to that?
What is the, it's smaller, it just because of the tree, while the tree would be there, what's the purpose of the island?
To make more room for parking.
No, I had to shrink it, but what is the, why is the island?
It's for the health of the tree, to make sure there's enough root, the root system and everything.
That's the only.
Yeah. Think of Lowe's and the really tight island there.
No other amendments? I'll entertain a motion for item number four with amendments.
Second.
Made by Nick.
Second.
Is that you? Seconded by Dan. All in favor, raise your hand. Four. Four. All opposed, raise your hand. Two. Item number five, parking quantity requirement, developer seeking relief for 34 spaces in lieu of 38. There was no comment on this regarding amendments. I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So move.
Made by Christie, seconded by Nick.
Cynthia.
Cynthia, sorry. All in favor, raise your hand. Two. All opposed, four. Item number six, parking lot setback widths, developer seeking relief in the 10-foot parking lot setbacks instead of the six-foot to accommodate the parking spaces. No changes to that as presented. I entertain a motion to approve as presented. Cynthia.
I'll second Cynthia.
Thank you, Dan. All in favor, raise your hand. Two. All opposed, raise your hand. Four. All right. So it looks like a majority of them, we were in favor of them as presented or amended while the parking, five and six, were not... Majority did not rule on those as presented.
So now you vote.
Now we're going to vote.
Well, this is just information to give the council so they can... If they want to go further with each individual one.
Is there any final comment?
Just to know real quick, so I do want to make sure that we all understand that it is important that we all go through this because like on Dixon Village, we just shot it down with no explanation and then city council got it again and we're like, I don't know what happened. So this is good. Thanks for going through this.
I don't know how you can vote approval for the overall project though when you... When the parking is so critical to the current plan.
That's up to you as a board member.
It's a good point.
Very good point.
Okay. Just, I just was checking.
Because for me, the whole feasibility of the project, while difficult, there is a need for this type of development and with all the comments presented, as Nick said, you know, getting those on the record, I think is important for long-term boards to hear and to understand the discussion that we had based on parking. But it doesn't mean that, in my opinion, that something should get shot down just for a parking requirement.
Well, I would love the project to occur. I just can't approve it in the way that it's been presented.
Okay. That's the bottom line.
Like you said, sort of voting on the final one, just people have a final comment on the project. Because like if there are some good aspects, some negative aspects, so that one goes, I would see everyone's whole thought process on whether to support it or whatever negative positive part.
Yeah, just add to the minutes. Sure. You want to start?
Sure. I agree. I think this is a good project. Personally, yeah. Especially since no one showed up at a public meeting. It wasn't going to be a good proposition. I thought about the setback, the residential property. But I do think putting that setback there and then with someone from the residential property, we're not as concerned about it. There's something that can be worked out between the property owners and what's acceptable as part of the buffer there. That's just kind of my concern to argue on, really limit the value used to that residential property behind it. Like I said, I like the project. I think it's a good project. It's the model that puts that setback in the residential kind of... No one was complaining for the residential lot. I definitely voted yes for it. Part of this is certainly as much getting that setback and impacting that lot and also the block. Thought is that block, you know, if it's abused in some way, we've got a claim here in this property here, is that just going to sit there as a random residential?
Might be a nice infill property for residential. I mean, it's... I'm not taking your...
No, I'm just...
Thank you, Jerry. Anybody else have any final thoughts they'd like to share?
Okay. I'll go ahead and start. Like I said before, they're putting in way too much. They're disregarding the zoning that's already there or that they're asking for. It's going too far. If you went back to a 30-foot buffer, they're going to lose 10 spaces. So now instead of 34 spaces, they got 24 spaces. So realistically, a project of this type is not going to feasibly work on this without these type of concessions and I think that's taking it too far. If we're going to allow this, we need to change the zoning law.
Exactly.
It's just, it's too much. It's too... You're not reducing it four. We're reducing it by 10 plus two more if we take the side yards into consideration. So we're almost cutting it in half. So I can't support it. I just can't.
Thank you, Dan. Norman?
I just, like Dan has mentioned, it's this plan has been presented to us with no regard of the zoning that's being requested and the information that's been provided tonight concerning the use of square footage and the unwillingness to reduce the square footage to make the parking side work just doesn't make any sense to me. It's a very poor plan, in my opinion, and I'm not supporting it. I would love the project to occur. I think the premise of the project is a very good premise and we do need that kind of space available in Belmont. My company wanted to relocate to Belmont, but there wasn't space for us to come here, so we had to go somewhere else. But if this had been here, it may have been an option. But I could support the project if it was done in a different manner.
Thank you, Norman.
All right. I'll just say that the individual merits of everything that I'm looking at, I don't see anything that's that egregious where I would be against it. My big staking point is going to be with Gerald. If this was all three properties being rezoned to be consistent with the other area, I think it'd be perfectly reasonable, but to leave a single residential property isolated like that, I think is an undue burden on her. So I'd say that'd be my holdup.
You have any comments?
Yes. I think this is a wonderful project. I think that we are in desperate need of office space. I don't even have an office or a little house. It's very hard to find office space here. I think Dimitri has done other projects here that have been fabulous and have really helped our community out. I think this whole entire corridor is going to be redeveloped as we talked about. It will probably redevelop into commercial. So it is unfortunate that the house is here, but it's in line with what's going to happen. And I think that it adds value to this house. Even if it doesn't turn commercial one day, it could turn multifamily or something else that will fit well in this area and help it be lockable for the things around it. So I think it's a wonderful project and I think it lends to some of our goals of providing our amenities, our services.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to move this application to city council. Approve as in, this is up to you. Approve as presented. Approve with modifications, which would be more appropriate based on the discussion, or disapprove.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as modified.
Made by Nick. Seconded by Cynthia. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed.
Yeah, how are you going to do that?
Three to three. It's three to three.
Just whatever. Okay. I mean, to me, the whole point was that we took the motion to approve with modifications, which then sends the message to city council, you need to look at this.
Sure. And they do have, they will in the minutes have all of these secondary motions and votes on the six items.
And hopefully they'll understand some of us are issues with... We're not against the development. We're against a development that doesn't...
So, but doesn't, we don't end there. We still have other findings to vote on.
Right.
We have to vote on the map amendment. Two findings are required. I'll entertain a motion that the project, and you'll have to recommend this, is or is not reasonable and in the public interest and the project is or is not consistent with the goals of the comprehensive land use plan.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the request is reasonable request in the public interest because the development plan is consistent with the adopted comprehensive land use plan and it is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive land use plans in the area of land use, economy and community character.
Okay, made by Nick. Cynthia, seconded. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Three to three. And then one final, a text amendment, only one finding is required. Entertain a motion that the project is or is not consistent with the goals of the comprehensive...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. I'm sorry. Yes. So that doesn't apply. You did both findings in one motion, which you can for map amendment.
He's efficient.
Thank you.
Sorry.
He's smarter than me.
He's efficient.
The two findings that were consistent.
So thank you for your time. Thanks to the applicants for your attendance as well as the public comment. Next item on the agenda is other business, discussion of duplexes and duets.
Yes. Okay.
Would anybody like a brief five-minute break and we can come back?
That would be great.
We'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.
Five minutes? Thank you.
Eight fifteen. Eight fifteen. Turn and discuss duplexes and duets.
Okay.
All right, so, we're gonna start. So, uh, well, thank you. So, I wanted to, um, bring this to you. So, I was asked by a planning board member called one day and said, "Hey, I'm looking at a property, you know, what about a duplex or duet?" And I was like, "Well, I could answer the duplex question, but I was, what is a duet?" So, what I found is our ordinance doesn't address it. So I started doing some research to find out what a duet is. So, basically, a duet is an attached home. Now, it's very often confused with duplexes because they're similar. They're two units in one building. The difference between the two is ownership. So duplex stays in a single ownership. One property owner, the building goes with the property. That is a duplex. A duet is an attached housing unit where each unit can be sold. It can be done two ways. It could actually be similar to a townhome where it's subdivided with a sheer wall, and the property goes with it, or it could be two condo-ed out, and then the property is in sort of like an HOA, the surrounding. But in most cases, they always just subdivide it, and the land goes with it. So there is a difference, uh, a difference, and our ordinance does not even recognize duets. And what I found from my research is, um, a lot of cities do have regulations that permit, uh, duets, um, some in North Carolina, a lot on the West Coast, Midwest, Arizona. So, I went to Charlotte to look, um, I was curious, what do they look like? And so, these are pretty big and interesting, uh, but these are examples I found on the internet. Um, these are primarily in the Charlotte area. The ones up above were more Midwest, um, Midwest-style. But I did find that we actually have a duet, duets in Charlotte, there, or, excuse me, in our city, but they are not, they, they were approved as two-unit townhomes, and they're in, um, they are in Eagle Park. So I'm gonna show you this corner property right here at Assembly in Lexington. So you can see it's an attached home. There are two separate lots right there. There is the aerial photograph on your left where you can see the dividing line. What's interesting on this is, they were approved as, not as duets, because we didn't recognize it that, but as townhomes. They're two-unit townhomes. Where our requirement, our townhomes have to be alley-fed, which assists. They have to have two parking spots per unit. So what this one did is, they had a two-car garage that's split in half, so, single car, and then two outside parking spots, and, which was shared. So that, uh, what I was told is, this is on one corner, but it was originally planned in this community to be, um, this style on each corner, but this is the only one that got built in this style on the corner. Uh, the, the picture on the right is the side street from Lexington. That's the front door to one of the units there that are, that's on the corner side. Then this is the front, and if you look at it, it looks like a, just a beautiful big house with a wraparound porch. And so you see there's one front door on one street. The other front door is on the other side. So this was, to me, this was a beautiful example of how possibly an infill, a well-designed duet could be feasible. Now, I'm gonna show you another example. This two is in Eagle Park. Now, this isn't the corner example, but these, you can see, all these units are two-unit townhomes. They're attached, all laid, and that's actually the alley that feeds these units. And then they look like this in the front. So, the unit on the left, you can see it's attached to that hand-colored one, which I put the photo on the right. So they, they have their separate doors, balconies, kind of look like separate units, but they do have a common wall. So, these could meet the description of a duet. Uh, but they did, were approved as townhomes, and they complied with regulations for them. So, in researching, I didn't go in depth, but what I found is that most of the regulations, um, they address certain topics. First of all, location. Where's the appropriate location if you were going to consider duets? Where would be the appropriate zone, you know, not only, uh, what I found is most ordinance is out there, they were meeting high density zones. Uh, and some regulations restricted it on corners only. So otherwise, they were considered a townhome-type product, but ones on corners, uh, they did specifically, specifically collect duets on corners. There's also associated performance standards where you need to think about minimum lot size, setbacks, similar to, again, uh, townhomes, where they can have a lot with, you have setbacks with townhomes. Uh, parking location. So I saw a variety out there. I tend to like the ones where the parking is more in the rear or the side. Uh, there's a sample, like, you don't see any parking on these. They're primarily in the rear. That's a front-loaded one, so they just have one parking garage in front. On the upper left, there's one on the side. This does have some parking street side, so does this one down here. I don't care if the castle design's up there, but it does have. You can see it's three stories, and they do have front-loaded garage. So we'd have to think about things about garage location or parking location, uh, which would be something we could definitely work on. And then, architecture. You know, if we allow this on the corner, we can specify that we want it just on, you know, on opposite street frontages. So are you okay with a duplex? Because a duplex doesn't have that restriction. So we allow duplexes in a single-family zone by right unless the lot is less than 1,000 square feet. And we have no restrictions on garage location, parking location, front door location. So this is always something we want to think about if we want to apply that to duet. Uh, you know, uh, look at different sides with the front door. And then process. You know, this would be something new for us. I think that if we were to allow this an infill in a single residential zone, we may want to start out by special treatment that would give us the ability to help evaluate, um, architecture that fit in the community and other aspects. And then what we may find is, well, we can set up parameters and regulations after little experience where maybe it could be by right and future. So sometimes you want to start out a little tighter to see if it works in your community, and then let it go. Once you set out the parameters and see what works, what it doesn't, it could be based like this basis, you know, especially initially. So, uh, something through thought, I wanted to throw it out to the board to see if that's something that we'd like more information on, and have us bring more information to you on lot sizes, parameters, where, if you're, if you form a subcommittee, if you guys want to be involved in evaluation, uh, something like that, interested, not interested. So the only difference now is, and I need to put this out there, is if someone wanted to do townhomes, which we are, in an infill situation, they do not do that. The ordinance doesn't allow it. So unless we create something for a duet, someone couldn't do a duet style today, call it a townhome, alley-fed, and so forth. So you can only do townhomes within a larger development than those of past in the general residential zone, that more than 30% of the units can be either alley-fed, single-family attached, or townhome. So if we want to consider, for example, allowing duets similar to a duplex on corner lots in a general residential zone, we would have to create regulations to allow that. So try to get a poll. See, I've, I've heard, you know, I've heard mixed feelings on that. I think it does help support infill development opportunities for more affordable housing than similar to purchasing a townhome. It would be, it would be a favorite in mine and entire, you know, townhome. Uh, but again, I just wanted to see what the board felt about that. I'll be glad to make any comments that you have, if you're interested.
Yeah, like, do we do the fourth one?
Which one? Yes, this one.
Well, duplex is multi-family. We consider it to be single-family.
We do, the building itself, but, but there's some legal opportunities that, that hold in the whole thing having single ownership, but I agree with you.
Our code considers it to be.
Single family, that's definitely right, and you're single.
Oh, oh.
No idea.
Residential townhomes in their condominiums.
Yeah, residential townhomes, teaming inside by side, property might not, that was residential, right?
Right. Unminimize?
Yeah, we had this conversation.
There's different.
Residential.
Yes.
So this, I think this is.
Which is something that we'd want to do, because when I heard Shelley about it, Charlotte, I met you, where basically for the past 10 years, duets have been very popular in Charlotte. I think I've told like three or four of you already. But what happened was builders were making, they were building duplexes, which have a lower fire code than a duet does. And then they started selling them as duets. So Charlotte went back and basically threatened on third units to turn their facilities off until they updated their, the firewalls to be duets. So one thought about it, just because I work with people who are filthy. They're popular, they're coming here anyway. You might as well get ahead of the curve and make sure that you're, they're built proper code. But the other thing about it is, we can already build duplexes. The difference, the big difference in a duplex and a duet is, if I build a duplex, I own the duplex, I tell somebody else, they own the duplex. Whereas on a duet, I can sell the left side to one family and the right side to another family. If you're, if you have a duplex, the, the majority of the duplexes I know of, they're rentals. Renters, they rent them out because obviously a single family isn't gonna live the two sides. Whereas a duet gives people the opportunity to have right and left ownership.
Yeah, I don't see a reason to do a separate duet code. It sounds like the townhome code already covers it, and I don't want to see high density in GR.
You can't do a single home on like, a lot, so if I have.
Our code says we can do two-unit towns, so, is that wrong?
You can't, so.
I mean, we have them on.
You can do, you can do a two-unit townhome in a larger development. You cannot do townhomes on their own on infill projects or infill lots. So that means somebody has to do a major subdivision, and only 30% of those units, unless you go into real high-density zone, such as the HC, where you can do apartments, uh, apartments or, I think it's Abercote, for example. That is a NCR zoning district, which is a high-density.
If you do a townhome on three blocks, that's the alley, too.
But again, it still can't be infill either.
Yeah, but, so what's our minimum width though for a single family infill?
It goes on the average. So it goes on average lot size.
Yeah, so if we're already doing 40-foot lots for a single family, I don't, I don't think we need to talk density. I think we're already doing townhomes, that we're getting townhome lot, uh, how, how high density is. As it is, we're putting properties in smaller, smaller pieces, and then we're gonna be going smaller.
I'm just gonna throw this out here. If I buy a corner lot, I have a choice between doing a duet, or I can build a house as big as will fit onto a, me, a duplex. No, just a house. I'm saying, I can build a house, and then I would put a greenie pad in the back of it. So if your argument's against density, I could already build the same density by right right now. It doesn't change the density.
I'd rather see one house or one driveway than a 40-foot lot. I don't want to see two driveways, that sidewalk with 50 driveways going down the street.
Okay, so in most cases, in most cases, the minimum lot size is, is at least 55. Otherwise, it's the average. So let me clarify. When I said on infill lot is the average, that means if the average in the area is a 70-foot lot, that's what the minimum lot width is going to be in an infill situation. So that's what I meant by that. You could use, you could say 40 feet, not like, that's not an option.
Let's say they are 55 foot lots, that would be, you said they'd have, now a half of that for two duets? Or would they have to be a duet 110 foot wide?
Well, that would, so, that is what would have to be evaluated. So the intent of a duet is still to look like.
A single family.
Family, you know, to blend. So we talked about, we want to maybe allow it on the corner. We have doors, we still meet the minimum lot width for the area, but the difference is, you know, as a whole together, but there would be a lot dividing, dividing it, similar to this one here. So, for example. Have you noticed this one's about the same size as this one, if not a little larger?
Yeah, corner lots have two different driveways, two different.
Alleys.
They have different frontages. So that's what I'm saying. It's an option on a duet or a duplex. That if we were to consider it, you could restrict it to, say, just corner lots, require it by SUP, make sure it still meets the minimum lot width, address where you want to see the parking garage, any of that. You have the ability to build the code.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that where I live, I have 100-foot lots, it's GR. You can already subdivide those lots into 50-foot, they're 110, I guess, 255-foot lots. I don't want to see four 25.
But don't, uh, don't break it down that far, because it's still a 55-foot wide lot. It's just, ownership is divided in half. I mean, ultimately, it is two lots, but, but it looks.
Make it look like.
It looks one.
That are the same width as one house, that's fine. I'm not picturing this going in that direction. I'm picturing this taking one lot, making it the same size as one house, but then splitting it in half and now having twice the lot numbers going down the street. Because four, yeah, four, a four-bedroom house is way different than two, three-bedroom towns.
If, well, one is, if you do a two-corner lot, it's saying that it's going down the street, it's not gonna happen.
If it's only corner lots, that's fine.
That's what we're talking about. Only corner lots, that's one thing. Or it's not, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I just don't want to see us start cutting lots in 25.
Well, that's what I didn't like about some of the examples in Charlotte, you know. It's like, you know, this could be appealing to somebody, but this is not a townhome. You know, it doesn't look like one big single-family home, it's like two, half of a castle.
The goal of duets is to look like a house. Like, Shelley, will you go back on this one?
Yeah, because the castle doesn't look like one house. It looks like two homes.
Like two. So, and again, the intent of why we suggested possibly starting out SUP, is you have the ability to evaluate the, the site, you know, the adjacent community, the product, does it look like one house, and if, does it, you know, the environment?
Because the other thing is, we could also require them to be alley-fed, right?
Yeah.
So, uh, in your example.
If they're alley-fed, then they're, they're just two townhomes. The ordinance already applies the way it applies, it doesn't change.
The ordinance doesn't allow a townhome on a single corner lot as.
Infill.
Right, but again, it's, it's corner lots. I mean, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about if you have a regular development with an alley, you don't need to worry about it. Because you're just a townhome. Yeah, not that much. 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 Like, any, any lot by one alley.
What they're trying to do is create it out to somewhere to go, like, to some neighborhood, by a lot.
But corner lots.
Yes.
Well, if alley-fed.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm.
Okay.
I don't want to see that part down the road, though, because it's larger.
I could support it if it's a special views, that it doesn't throw the neighborhood off.
GR is so.
Exactly. I don't want to see it being done in, like, in Charlotte, where you develop it by one lot, all of a sudden, they subdivide it.
So it sounds like it just needs more discussion. So can, can we, um, get more information from staff, or?
Absolutely. Did you want to formal subcommittee, to work with staff? You want staff to get a lot of information and give it to the whole board?
Are there any volunteers to participate in a subcommittee?
I will.
You interested? And you just said a baby.
Dan? All right.
I'm not, I'm not saying no.
I think.
Can I just put, frame it to this for one second? On a corner lot right now, if it's 10,000 square feet, we can all do duplex.
I don't have a problem with corner lots.
And that's all we're talking about?
Yeah.
My suggestion is copying Charlotte, in that Charlotte.
I don't want to do that.
Well, well, they frame it to the mall, so.
Right, so.
Learn from what, learn from what, right.
That's all it is, that's what she's saying.
But what I'm concerned.
The way I say that, it's not the way it looks, but the ease of understanding when developers want, and they do, it can only be on a corner lot. So they're not wasting your time coming in down the street.
If that's the case, yeah, I'm fine. I don't have a problem. My problem is, I don't want to see this turn to the Charlotte ordinance, where we take these lots that are 100 feet wide and turn them into two, two duets that are now 25-foot wide townhomes, and make, you know, low-density residential properties into high, really high-density properties, because they're getting around it with this duet code. I don't think it's necessary.
I think corner lot, like, when I was working in Charlotte five years ago, the rule was corner lots only. So when you went to a project and you considered it, if it wasn't a corner lot, you already knew the answer was no. Nobody even wastes their time coming in here. That's why one of the things is, I mean, you can really already put a duplex on a 10,000 square foot lot, but we're talking about duets on the corner lots only.
What about properties that have frontage and alley? Are there many of that in town? Uh, I mean, if it's not part of a full development already?
No.
Probably not anything, right?
No.
So.
Yeah, every, and all of our alley lots are part of a larger subdivision plan that way. So, so, Ken, would you be open to letting staff work and come up with some type of draft? And we can't, we can bring it back, and we can order the whole.
Fortunately.
We can't get it.
I think that would be great if, and.
Is that okay?
Invite Cynthia's to those discussions. I mean, if she's willing to participate. Maybe not a subcommittee, but just, you know, it sounds like she's really passionate and has some experience, so.
Yeah, absolutely. She has experience, and she would help show this word. Because I didn't, I had never heard of a duet.
Yeah, and actually, if you go two slides forward, actually, that duet right here, that's red and blue, like, those are the ones I have, I'm very familiar with in Charlotte. And it's very interesting, because I had a client that did this in Charlotte. And the blue would be one person's ownership, and the red would be another person's ownership. And they, so it, it, the ones we did, the colors weren't so drastic. It was like dark blue and light blue. And it was one family lived on the right, one family lived on the left, so it wasn't a duplex.
Yeah, I mean, I know what it is, I'm just.
Right, and, but they really took care of their own parts, like the way that roof separated. It just changed the dynamic, and it just allowed for a different kind of living type.
Yeah, but those are generally on 25-foot lots, and that's what I don't want to see.
I, you can't even do that in a mall right now. You can't build on 25-foot lots.
Well, that's what I want to avoid, though. Because that's what, that's what gets built all over Charlotte. I'm working on three projects right now that are doing exactly that. I just don't want to see it.
I did come across some examples of ordinance to establish minimum lot size as well as width, so.
Well, so, so for example, Charlotte, if you have duets, like in a multifamily development, A, it's considered multifamily, well, the duet building is not, but they require a 16-foot building separation. So something like that, that forces the lot width out. So if you did have multiple down the street, just to make sure, I just don't want to see these stacked townhomes in areas where they don't belong. Because you're gonna have somebody come in. Because you're gonna have somebody come in and buy four houses in a row, and then turn it into, basically duplexes next to each other that look like a row of townhomes. I mean, it's, it's literally the Chronicle Mill. I mean, it's, it's literally the Chronicle Mill item, that it's gonna do the same thing. Now there, it's more appropriate, because it's downtown, but I want to see that out in, I don't want to see that out in a GR district that's residential.
So we'll work on a draft, get some assistance with board members, and come back with the draft, get feedback, okay?
Thank you, Shelley.
All right, thank you.
No other business listed? Any other comments from board members? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, made by Dan, second by Jerry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.